I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. Thank you.
The next is approval of minutes from the June 6, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Mike, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Rick. Any changes, errors, omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion varies. Okay. The next item, acceptance of agenda. I'm going to remove, under new business discussion on departmental fees, that is not going to be covered tonight. We'll cover that probably in July.
I think we should cover it though.
Oh yeah, it wasn't ready.
Oh, okay.
I didn't have the information.
Oh, okay.
We won't be having that. So we'll do that in July. So with that one item change, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion with the change.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under communications and correspondence, I wanted to let everyone know that there will be a groundbreaking at town, we'll meet at Town Hall on 6/27/18. And that would be for the new sidewalk project. And anyone is, and everyone is welcome, but we have invited the sidewalk committee, as well as the Board of Selectmen. So that's the 27th, a week from today, at 6 o'clock, and we'll meet at Town Hall. To let everyone know, particularly those in the neighborhood, that the project will be commencing very soon. And if there's ever any question about it, or you want to see the plans, they're available in the Public Works office. And the plans are also available in the Town Clerk's office. You can take a look at where the sidewalks are going to be, and how they're going to be put in. The next item, I wanted to let everyone know that there was a request by Mrs. Satajeh for an agenda item in regard to a few things. Actually, there was a request in May, and a request in June. And in terms of speeding enforcement, we did have a workshop on that, I would say. It was a forum. And we will be having that on, I'm hopeful, for July 20th, when we will talk about that with the Board of Selectmen. There's some things that we're going to be doing in that regard, and it came up at the workshop that we had. It's probably going to be some areas that we're going to use as test areas. So on High Street and Fairview Street, in speaking with the police, it looks like we're going to try to do a four-way stop there. And maybe over here on Free Stone Avenue, where it meets East Main Street. Those are areas where it's been reported of quite a bit of breaking of the speed limit, and it's something that we'd like to try. It may not be permanent, but it's something to get us accustomed to slowing down and being aware of pedestrians in those areas. And in addition, in terms of a couple of matters that we have received, quite a bit of public comment on, and I have said, and it's because they are in litigation, both matters, the matter associated with Rocky and the matter associated with Kelly Driveway, there are items that I feel should be shared with the full Board of Selectmen in terms of those pending litigations. Hopefully, we will be able to reach settlement on those soon. So I'm hopeful that those will be covered in executive session, which are planned also for, I hope, June 20, if not another date in July. But we would certainly, in accordance with FOI requirements, have those noticed ahead of time. Okay, so those are, those items I wanted to mention, and we have a special, we have two very special guests. Everyone is, of course, welcome here, but we have two in particular, that have served on the board for many, many moons, and they're no longer serving on this board. They're both involved in other areas of the town. And I'm going to ask two former select people, Kitch Sernicki and Fred Naus, to come up to the podium. We have a token of our appreciation to you. I think I saw Fred walk in. I don't think Kathy is available.
He's hiding.
Welcome. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Beth.
Yes, good to have you. ... Committee. So, it is my honor, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and certainly on behalf of the townspeople of Portland, to honor Kitch Green Sernicki, also known as Alice Kitch.
Mary Alice.
Mary Alice, we'll have to change that. For your outstanding time, effort, and work, Kitch, that you have accomplished as a member of the Board of Selectmen. You served a vacancy starting on April 20, 2016, and the town of Portland has greatly benefited, benefited from your generous work, your outstanding intelligence, volunteering, and leadership. And now therefore, let it be known that I, Susan Bransfield, as first selectwoman of the town of Portland, and on behalf of the full Board of Selectmen, we want to extend our sincere thanks and our appreciation to you, Kitch. We miss you. We're happy, on this 20th day of June in the year 2018, to present you with this certificate of our humble appreciation. And it's signed by myself, as well as Lupeir, Mike Pelton, Ed Char, known as Rick Char, Ben Serb, Jim Tripp, and Ralph.
Thank you very much, Susan. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
It was an honor and pleasure to serve on this Board of Selectmen. Most of you know, it was the capping off of 10 and a half years of elected service, or serving a vacancy. I believe that our voices are most strongly heard in local government, and I thank each of you for the job that you do here, and I'm glad to be able to continue to serve on the EDC. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kitch. Good to see you, Fred. Fred Naus, may it be known, Fred, that this certificate of appreciation is presented by the Portland Board of Selectmen, on behalf of all the townspeople, to you, Frederick R. Naus, for your outstanding time, effort, and work you accomplished as a member of the Board of Selectmen, having served three terms, beginning by filling a vacancy on June 1, 2011, and then being elected November 2011, November 2013, and again, November 2015. The town of Portland has greatly benefited and progressed to its present status because of your generous work, your great leadership, and your volunteering, and certainly, Fred, always willing to give your comments and your guidance to us. Now therefore, let it be known that I, Susan Bransfield, first selectwoman of the town of Portland, Connecticut, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, do hereby extend our sincere thanks and appreciation to you, Fred, presented this 20th day of June in the year 2018, by our Board of Selectmen, Lupeir, Mike Pelton, Rick Char, Ben Serb, Jim Tripp, Ralph Zampano, and myself, Susan Bransfield. We miss you, and we hope that you continue to serve, as I know you well. And as Kitch pointed out a few minutes ago, she didn't let you know that she was, for many years, the mayor of Weathersfield. So Kitch has served in local government in at least two towns. And Fred had served previously in many capacities, not the least of which was state senator for this particular state senate area. So you're both dedicated individuals to state and local government, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate both of you, and it's a pleasure to be able to still say we work together toward improving our town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Beth.
Mike, it won't be longer than an hour, is that what I... No, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and it's nice to see everybody. And as Kitch mentioned, public service is so important, particularly in, I think, in the small towns, but any town. I mean, the volunteers and the people who are basically spending countless hours serving the town, without it, it's the glue. I look at it as a glue to keep, keep the town functioning, and I'd like to thank all of you for serving, and I know you're all going to do a good job. I, when I was serving, I certainly did enjoy it, and I'm glad to see that a couple of the initiatives that I worked on with other folks, Kitch included, Susan certainly, the sidewalks you mentioned, finally are coming to fruition. It's been a long battle, and it took you folks to push it across the finish line, and I appreciate, and I think the folks in town are certainly going to appreciate it too. And I think Mike said he was, had a Rolex watch for Kitch and I. Was that...
(laughing).
Oh, was it? Yeah. Thanks again, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I also want to recognize, while Kathy Richards couldn't be here tonight, I do want to make acknowledgement and certainly give appreciation to Kathleen Richards. Kathy served as deputy for selectmen for several terms, and also was very active in many, many, many committees, having served seven terms, beginning by being elected in 2003, 2005, 2007, 2009, 2011, 2013, and again in 2015. I'm sorry Kathy can't be here tonight, but on behalf of the full Board of Selectmen and myself, we want to certainly acknowledge Kathleen's tremendous, tremendous contribution to this board and to our town at large. So thank you, Kathy, and we'll be sure to get this to her. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an executive session. I don't anticipate more than 10 minutes. I need to inform the Selectmen about a possible purchase of property by the town. So if I could ask your indulgence in waiting outside for about 10 minutes, and we'll call you back in when we're finished. But before you do, I need a motion from the Selectmen to go into executive session for the purpose of possible purchase of property by town.
So moved.
Jim?
Second.
Seconded by Ralph. Thank you. So we'll just take a couple of minutes, and you can wait out. Is public comment, and we'll start with this side of the room, this side. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment at this time? Yes, sir? Yes. If you would kindly just give your name, this is public comment only.
My name's Aaron Skelton, Great Hill Road. I'm here as a supporter of Rocky. It's come to my attention that there's been atypical treatment towards Paul and Rocky. Just recently, a 16-year-old girl was bit by a lab in town. That dog went through the mandatory rabies quarantine and was sent home, which I'm pleased to hear. It's, it's not 1920 anymore. The, the laws, the social constructs pertaining to dog bites and like, they're rooted in an era, from an era, excuse me, where animals were status symbols, they're tools, treated like garbage. That's not the world we live in today. They're, they're family today. More and more people adopt, sorry, I've lost a few pets, so...
Take your time.
More, more and more people are adopting, less people are looking for that, that pure There's, there's more heart involved today when it comes to getting a pet. It's, it's adopting a four-legged child for most. I recently had a son, he's one, and everybody told me it takes a village to raise a kid, and it's, it's true. You need a lot of help. And I think that statement, "It takes a village," carries over to a lot in life. Takes a village to help a townsman, a neighbor, a friend, when he's in a motorcycle accident and going to lose his leg. Poor guy can't walk and has an incident with his dog. The, the kill order bestowed upon Rocky, because of this incident, while Paul was having a pretty rough time, it shows a great lack of empathy, in my opinion, complete lack of compassion. And regardless of the situation, I don't think, in this day and age, anybody needs to have their four-legged family member put on death row. Want to share a quote from Jane Goodall. She's a world-renowned anthropologist, if you haven't heard of her. She said, "You cannot share your life with a dog or a cat and not know perfectly well that animals have personalities, minds, and feelings." I've had a lot of animals, livestock, pets. That statement is 100% true. Animals are a lot smarter than you think. They have feelings, they have love for their caretaker. Another quote I want to share is from St. Francis Assisi. He's a, he's a Roman Catholic friar, founder of the Franciscan's Order. "If you have men who will exclude any of God's creatures from the shelter of compassion and pity, you will have men who will deal likewise with their fellow men." Another quote's from Arthur Schopenhauer, a German philosopher. "Compassion for animals is intimately connected with goodness of character, and it may be confidently asserted that he who is cruel to animals cannot be a good man." Like I said in the beginning, I'm here to advocate for Rocky and all dogs going forward. We're halfway through 2018. We're reshaping the world. I think it's time to change how we deal with these situations. I really do not see any issues going forward with any dog, no matter how vicious, and I should share, recently, so I'm going to cry, I'm sorry. Recently, put down a very vicious dog who lived a long, healthy life. There was an attack, the problem was recognized, he was our, our work dog, our mascot. He lived a long, happy life, without incident. After the problem was identified, steps were taken in his care, and, and I don't see why we can't do that with, with Rocky, any, any situation going forward. A conditional release with, you know, Paul's said numerous times, he's willing to fence his property, he has massive support from the community to come help with labor, materials, money, whatever it takes. And I really think that's a reasonable and fiscally responsible compromise, and I would urge you to go that route. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Anyone else on this side? Yes, sir.
My name is Adam Wazaka. I live at 180 Old Marvel Turnpike, and I'm here for Rocky, good friend Paul. Think as a town, we should be helping him out. I think we should all get together and support him as a town. You know, I hear people haven't even seen the dog, you know, in town. I think you should see him, see what he's like. He's a great dog. We have tons of support. I think people should get on board and support him as well. You know, make, make this guy happy, you know? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side? Okay, we'll start on this side, right here, in the front. Sure.
I'm here tonight to talk about Rocky, a dog that belongs to Portland resident Paul Bell but isn't currently living at home since he's been unfairly imprisoned at the Portland Pound for over two years. As some of you may know from the last town meeting, Mr. Bell gave all the selectwomen and men his phone number and a date to go to his house to see where he could put up his fence and put another safety precautions. Disappointingly, those six out of seven selectwomen and men took down the phone number and date, all didn't show up nor tell Mr. Bell that they weren't going to. I'm just wondering why none of you went or contacted Mr. Bell to explain why you weren't going to be there. That's the polite thing to do when you're invited to someone's house. Recently, my family was invited to go meet Rocky through the fence of the Portland Pound. I have provided you with pictures of Rocky looking me through the fence. I can assure you that Rocky is not an aggressive dog, just as Natalie McNeil, a dog behaviorist, explained. She evaluated Rocky and does not think that Rocky is aggressive. Rocky does not deserve to be imprisoned anymore. Tell me you've never made a mistake. Rocky made one mistake, and now it's time for him to go home. Speaking of mistakes, I want to remind you that there have been two incidents where Portland's police dogs attacked two innocent people, unprovoked. Both of these dogs belong to one police, police officer. Despite the first dog attacking a seven-year-old girl, that dog is put back into service, and that police officer was allowed to have a second police dog who also attacked a person. Both times, no punishment was given to the dog or the officer. How is that fair that Rocky was sentenced to death when the injuries he inflicted were less severe than the injuries that a seven-year-old got sustained? He inflicted were less severe injuries than the seven-year-old girl sustained. This process of issuing the kill order seems random at best, heavily influenced, influence at worst. A recent River East article stated that animal control officer felt pressure from the selectwoman and the town's attorney to issue the kill order. Recently, we looked at the reports of dog biting humans for the past two years in Portland. Approximately eight bites occurred, and in all those cases, the dogs were in quarantine for 14 days, then released back to their owners. The reports don't list the severity of the bites, so it's difficult to determine how or why every one of them gotten, where every one of those cases were issued. Certainly, certainly, the police dog's injuries were more severe than what Rocky bites caused. Yet Rocky is the only one dog with a kill order. Why is that? And is this more a case of what you, who know about the actual dog? The judge assigned to the appeal is Sheila Huddleston. She has the ability to allow the town and the dog owner to reach a settlement outside of court. I urge all of you to contact her, requesting that she just do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side of the room?
I'm not sure. She's out there.
Mrs. Satajeh?
You're a tough act to follow.
I don't know how to do this. Oh, there it goes. How's that?
Is it good?
Yeah, that works.
Melissa Gerrier Satajeh, 111 Collins Hill. So I was reading the small newspapers, and there was an article from January 2018 with the, with the headline, "Connecticut Town Seeks to Ratchet Up Penalties for Canine Attacks on Dogs, Humans," and our selectmen are quoted as saying, "These are very difficult pictures to look at. They're frightening to look at. The fact that the state has not responded and resolved the matter is unacceptable. The state has dropped the ball." Speaking about the dog attacks, another selectman said, "This is a big problem here in Portland, and the problem can be disastrous. We need to make our feelings known to the state." Well, that's what we're doing. We're making our feelings known to you all. And it's really frustrating, as you all are finding out, to have to rely upon somebody else to enforce a statute. We feel the same way. We want fair, transparent enforcement. Because of the lack, and the lack of enforcement and transparency doesn't only fall at the state level, it happens here, in our own backyard. Isn't it ironic that one of the selectmen says that pictures are very difficult to look at, and they're frightening to look at, yet when presented with other public safety issues, nothing is said? Is it interesting that a selectman says that the fact that the state has not responded and resolved the matter is unacceptable, even as we're asking you to resolve things, and you don't? There is a widespread feeling, as you've all witnessed by the number of people that are showing up in the public comment, and the passion around that public comment, that there is a disregard for statutes and enforcement that is based upon, that there's a feeling that there is a disregard... I lost my place. For statutes and enforcement, and it's based upon who you are, who you know, or who's in your family tree. Another documented example about uneven enforcement is when a Portland zoning, there was a Portland zoning issue, and one of the town's attorneys states, "The town, in response, said it's factually and legally unsound to assert the court doesn't have jurisdiction just because the zoning board of appeals hasn't yet played out. Municipalities must have the right to ask a court to force a defendant to stop certain behavior." Well, that's funny that you all think that, or the town's attorney does, because we've asked for that, and we've got nothing. So it's frustrating. Olson went on to say that the town can't file lawsuit, if the, if the town can't file a lawsuit in cases like this, it would put every municipality at the mercy and whims of those who violate the zoning regulations. Sound familiar? We're those people. We're those people that when, when things aren't done right, and evenly, and transparent, we're the ones who will get hurt. Based upon Attorney Olson's response, it seemed like it was very passionate, but it's a one-off display. We can't even get the town's attorney to stop referring to a change in topography without a permit by the violator, because she keeps calling it an alleged tree cutting. Okay? The trees are gone, soil has moved, ergo, it's a change in topography. And this was done to accommodate the violator. Last week, the selectwoman reminded my husband that one of the reasons the Kelly zoning violation is almost five years old is because they had to play out in the courts. Yet according to the town's own attorney... Yet according to the town's own attorney, if the town can't file a lawsuit in cases like this referencing another zoning issue, it would put every municipality at the mercy and whims of those who violate the zoning. Again, okay for some, not so much for others. So one homeowner is accommodated and another one isn't. Dogs go home, Paul's dog stays. You know, is this discrimination? Is it special treatment? Or is it just how we handle a great businessman? That's what I'm hearing about our neighbor. Let's look at another fiasco, so-called gravel pit. From the sounds of it, it sounds like some, one of the selectmen is on a hit list or something because he's with us on the pain-of-mind list, is what my perception is. According to the town's attorney, Carrie Olson, she accuses Ben Serb of sidestepping the special permit regulations. Yet, the town attorney isn't engaged with an actual zoning violation that's going on five years old. While I understand that from Olson's feedback to my husband in writing, that it's up to the town's discretion how to handle this issue. Again, different rules for different folks, different enforcement, different views, lack of transparency. So one statute violator gets to travel, live their lives, everything's awesome. Paul, do you get to, do you travel? Do you go on vacation? You worry about this, don't you?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. See, he worries about it. He's not being coddled. Maybe he's not a great businessman. You pay your taxes?
Sure.
There you go. That's what makes him valuable. It's what makes me valuable and everybody in this room. We deserve the same respect. I also found it interesting through my reading that a former selectman was part of the legal counsel for, I'm probably not going to say the name right, DeMar's family. And so the original lawsuit was filed in 2016, and he was on the Board of Selectmen. And he's got y'all's ear. How does that look to us? What would you think if you were part of us in the audience? Looks bad, doesn't it? Looks kind of underhanded. Perception is reality, folks. Last week, or no, last meeting, got the message, can't discuss open legal issues. Well, I checked into the judicial site today. I saw Paul's case is extended, I think is what I read. And didn't find anything on the Kellys. But hey, what do I know? I just get his water. I just reach out to the selectwoman's office, don't hear anything. But hey, it's okay. I'll keep paying my taxes and keep showing up. There was a meeting up there, I think in late May, early June. Not sure, maybe it was a family meeting? Maybe it was a great businessman fan club meeting? Don't know because we can't get a status. And I want to give you some feedback from a meeting that I had once with selectwoman Bransfield. She mentioned, she gave me feedback that I made her feel uncomfortable, I made her feel defensive. So I guess holding someone accountable makes them uncomfortable. Then I urge everybody in this room, make them uncomfortable. That's how you get people accountable. Make them accountable, make them uncomfortable. Now, some on the upside. So we had the police in the neighborhood last weekend, first weekend in years. We could sleep with the windows open. It was quiet because they were pulling people over. So it works. So the long and short of it is, everybody in this room needs to make them accountable. We are not to be ignored, we are not to be treated differently because we aren't the right last name from the right family tree or good businessman, great businessman, excuse me. That's the quote. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
For those of you that may not have been here earlier, I did announce under communications that the selectmen will be apprised of the Rocky matter because there is a scheduled hearing in August. And we will also be apprised, so that's the Rocky case and that the Kelly driveway situation as well. There are, I will state, many, many factors associated with both these matters. And I appreciate all of the input seriously that you have given to us. And I know that the selectmen will be able to assist in the decision-making as it goes forward. You know, the town is involved in many, many matters. Some of the matters that are mentioned here tonight are very important matters, all of them are. And there are many that are not mentioned here as well. So I just think it's important to know that we will be addressing these at a future executive session so that all those details and all of the information that the selectmen have received can be used as decision-making proceeds. One moment, please, I saw Danielle's hand go up.
I don't have much to say.
Thank you, Danielle.
My name is Danielle Piatti. I reside at 35 Strickland Street. I'm just here again for Rocky, and I know what you're saying, but I hope the date can get moved up before August. I mean, I think it's time that this dog is released to his owner. It's just sad, I mean, just seeing pictures and seeing how nice he is, he's not aggressive. I mean, giving kisses, I mean, come on. If that was an aggressive dog, that dog would not, you wouldn't be able to go near him. I just feel Rocky should go home sooner than later and not wait till August. I think it should be moved sooner than August because by the end of August, you're going to go into September, then we're going to go October, then we're going to be in the wintertime. And there's a fence, we can put fence up, everybody's on board, there's a trainer on board. I think this matter should move sooner. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
Robert Sadajeh, 111 Collins Hill, Portland. And just wanted to comment, you know, on your soundbite about Portland having so much to do. It sounds like smoke and mirror. Again, you're always coming back with these things to push people off instead of addressing. I mean, Portland has 6,000 registered voters. We had a $34 million budget to vote on, 500 people showed up. I think you would love to hear feedback from anybody as a resident, anytime you can get it. As first selectman, you should be, you should know all these voters by first name. You've been in office for about eight years, you should have been at everybody's door, get to know them one-on-one, and you have a turnout for 500 voters approximately to vote on a $34 million budget. So you can find time to address these things. The lack of transparency is unnerving. These executive committees, meetings, in secret regarding Kelly, the zoning violation by Kelly. It's behind closed doors. The impacted residents are not involved in it. I was up here, I mean, it's getting like Groundhog's Day, the movie, if you've ever seen it, it's the same thing over and over again. Was up here last meeting, never heard back from you, not, nothing, again. Supposedly, there's a meeting coming up, you have an executive meeting, maybe it's going to be pushed out to July before you know it, you're shipping Kelly off to Florida again. And so, you know, the lack of transparency in a small town like this isn't necessary. Doesn't, you know, I'd like to see you get more involved with the community, talk to these people one-on-one. I mean, what's with the political soundbites all the time? And the Ethics Commission, by the way, too, I looked at their ordinance is really dated, not user-friendly, especially for a resident trying to file a complaint. And I did speak to somebody on the Ethics Committee, and they said they tried to get it revised and were denied that. It's not usable, it's not easy to file an ethics complaint, and it should be looked at again, and so that, you know, every citizen can go to that and understand it, it's written in legalese, doesn't even seem like it applies to any residents. And, you know, the Ethics Committee itself, they do their meetings behind closed doors as well. You file a complaint, you have, nobody reaches out to you for feedback, clarification, and so how is the due diligence done on an investigation? They're going to go behind closed doors, they don't, you know, you've got all these section As, line B, letter D, and does, what does the violation meet this, match that? It's ridiculous. So, and it's also ridiculous that they don't talk to you about this, about the complaint that you file. How could they possibly do their due diligence? It's unconscionable that they would go behind closed doors without discussing this with the parties involved. So would definitely like to see some transparency with that. And who knows what the next step is with this Kelly case? I mean, you said there's a meeting, who knows if that's going to happen? Who knows what your narrative is behind closed doors? I've heard you talk to people and say, "Well, the neighbors are fighting," or "They're not cooperative," which is totally incorrect, a total falsehood. And you've been accommodating Kelly since day one on this. So what is your narrative behind closed doors? Nobody knows. Because you're not out in the public meeting people, you're doing whatever you do as, what's on, ever your agenda is. So that Ethics Committee should go, ordinance should go on the agenda to be re-reviewed. Even the Ethics person who I spoke to said, she said, "You're correct. It is awful. It's almost unusable." And lastly, you know, if the officers were here, I would, you know, thank them for doing a great job out there in Portland on Saturday. They had a lot of visibility and really shut down what was going on out there for that day. I did see that New London just enacted a municipal ordinance to empower their officers to confiscate ATVs and detain riders of ATVs with an initial fine of $1,000. And if they don't pick up the ATV within 45 days, they can destroy it.
Was that just weak, Mr. Sadajeh?
Uh, yeah, it was fairly recent, yeah. And also, the city of Hartford has the same problem. But only City of Hartford is a much more of a, well, we got the utility trail, so you know, it's an ATV park in itself, but the city of Hartford is a little crazier because it's inner-city excitement. And it's known around New England that you can go in Hartford and run your ATV through the town. They arrested, and they've been empowered too, they empowered their officers to do more with that. They arrested 10 ATV riders, and half of them were from out of state, from Rhode Island, Providence, and Springfield. So there's something more that we can be doing here in the town to discourage that type of ATV riding and dirt bikes through the town because if not, we're going to end up like Hartford where it's going to get known, where you can do this, run rampant here with your ATVs without being held accountable for that. Thank you.
Thank you for the information.
Hi, Melissa, how are you?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, good evening. Melissa Valenti, 19, Rome Avenue, Middletown, Connecticut. I just want to say I'm here to support Rocky and Mr. Bell. I will be here at every single meeting until we can come to closure. I just want to start off by saying, going through some FOI, Freedom of Information requests, we found a few years back, there was an incident on a gentleman attacked by a dog, which the gentleman was sent to the hospital, and the dog was under a seven-day quarantine and then sent home. Just another incident last week where there was a owner and her dog on their own property. The other dog was unleashed, unsupervised, and attacked that dog. However, that dog is home recovering, but it's in still pretty bad shape. And that owner and the dog got off with a verbal warning. I just want to know how, how are these cases different than Rocky's? I'm really, you know, really not getting this whole picture. It's very sad and it's very unfortunate. I think, you know, this is just getting really to be a waste of taxpayers' money. Also, you know, Mr. Bell and Rocky, they deserve answers, they want closure. Mr. Bell wants Rocky to come home. We do have measures in place for Mr. Bell, like we discussed, fencing, myself, and a lot of the Portland community is willing to donate money, and they're time to help put up that fence. And I hope that's going to happen soon. You know, I'm a pet owner, I also am involved in rescue. I have five rescue cats, and I also own a pit bull. I have taken in a pit bull, a deaf pit bull, and many other abused and unwanted pit bulls. That's all I've, I've taken in, is pit bulls. I have two children and a husband, and I feel, you know, very confident in, you know, the way that these dogs are treated. Pit bull is, I know it sounds like a very bad name to a lot of people. It's not. A pit bull is actually one of the best breeds of dogs that I have ever taken in to our home. I felt very safe with my children. One is 20 and one is 12, and they're still alive today, you know, with no dog bites. You know, I just think Rocky should be given a fair chance. Also, I think that all animal control, not, I'm not talking just Portland, I'm talking about all over the state of Connecticut, everywhere, should have more than six hours of training. That's all they're required to have, is six hours of training, which is very little. So I just want to please ask you, just maybe consider revoking Rocky's kill order and send him home with Mr. Bell. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. I was asked about trainings and information for the animal, from the animal control officer, and ACO Cruccio will be doing some additional training sessions this summer. I do think that is very important, it's something that's been mentioned many times. And I did bring some of the materials that she has available, some of which you may already have seen, but she does. have seen, but she does, and has, does have written materials, and she's also going to do some demonstrations, particularly the different kinds of leashes and things of that nature in terms of training for future animal owners and those that maybe own them as well. I think that's an important part of our service from the animal control officers in office. Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Paul?
I got to use the microphone anyway.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi, my name is Paul Bell, 187 Old Marble Timber Pike, Portland, Connecticut. I'm just going to keep it brief, I think we've discussed a lot of the matters over and over. One disappointing thing was, I invited you all to come to my house last Wednesday at 7:30, and I had no visitors and not even a phone call. So, I'm going to say that again, I'm not going to do an open invitation like I did last time, but you were still welcome to call me regarding this case, particularly because it's a legal matter. I've heard that you, there's no reason why you can't understand what's going on, see the house, see the dog. That's what I'd really like you to do. See the dog. Come and meet me down at, down at the pound. See Rocky for yourself, see how he is. I welcome all of you to come down there, and you'll have a better understanding of his demeanor, how he is with, with different situations. He's not the dog perhaps you formulated in your mind or any other, you take a look at the Save Rocky page, there's some good videos on there and see how he is. But I, I'm actually imploring you to come and see him, because you'll have a better understanding of who we are talking about, and perhaps why everybody here is also here. I know you have other matters to discuss, other important matters. I can't see a more important matter than life or death. So, 860-338-0922, and we can arrange to meet down there. You won't be able to meet him face to face, well, face to face, but through a cage, but you could still, just from that alone, you could see how he is. So please, give me a call, meet me down there, I'm there every day. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Shirley Altman? Thank you for inviting me.
I'd like to, I hope you're sending Mrs. Bransfield the bill first.
Yeah, the other bill is Freedom.
That's cheaper than my bills. I want to rehash the story on Rocky and everything, I think everyone is pretty much aware of the story, but some procedural things. All right, Rocky was with Paul about six months when he bit Mr. Demarest, okay? But before that, he had been found and he was deemed to be adoptable by Karen Peruccio, the animal control officer. Regarding the kill officer, it's in the River East that, in an interview, Ms. Peruccio had said she faced a lot of pressure to issue the order from the Town Council and for Select Woman Bransfield. It took Mr. Bell six months to get his initial hearing with the Department of Agriculture. Took the Department of Agriculture 22 months to make a decision in relation to his appeal on the disposal order, and they upheld the disposal order. Then, this is, I think a lot of people would, would have some feelings. In the same article, it was reported that in 2004, Mrs. Bransfield's cousin, a home health aide working in a private home.
It's not the right year.
Well, anyway, huh? 2014?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not four.
I misspoke. Cousin in a home, and was mauled by multiple rottweilers. According to the police, her cousin was near death when they came. This is absolutely horrible, and I don't think there's anybody in the world that would not be affected by this. Could this horrific personal experience somehow be impacting Mrs. Bransfield's actions taken and attitude toward this Rocky situation? I think that's something you have to be very, very careful of. In the June 1st River East, there was the discussion in relation to the two police dogs that had bitten. The, in 2002, in the 2002 instance, the dog attacked a five-year-old girl that was getting off a school bus in East Hattam and was with her older brother. Her bites were to her back and side of her head, she received lacerations to her head and body. She was treated with sutures and staples at the Connecticut Children's Medical Center. In 2009, a woman was pushed aside by Nico, another dog, police dog. And the dog had been let out of the cruiser and then went after her and her dog. Why were Caesar and Nico treated differently than how Rocky is currently being treated? There too, their handler, which happened to be the same police officer in both instances, was not in control of them. It was reported that the incident in 2009, the dog was just let out of the cruiser. There too, the handler was not in control of them, and the handler too got a second chance. Thank you.
Hi, Kim Nagy Marushak, 97, Middle Saks Avenue Extension. I'll be brief. Mr. Bell did invite the kids down, and to be honest, he's been for a while, if you want to have the kids come down and meet the dog. And in the beginning, I was very apprehensive, not knowing, is this dog going to be put down next week and then I have to deal with some very upset children? So, we finally made the decision to go down and let them meet the dog, and anytime they meet a new dog, I'm apprehensive, you don't know. I knew they had the fence, but I was very, very pleasantly surprised by Rocky's demeanor. And to see the look on the kids' faces and to see how Rocky interacts with Mr. Bell, it's clear, this isn't a case of a dog that is innately harmful, you know, dangerous, he made a mistake, you know, he can definitely be given a second chance. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and Mrs. Bransfield and I went back and emailed, I think I'm pretty up to date on things happening in town, I try to stay up on the Board of Ed meetings, attend those when I can. I've reached out to Board of Ed members via email, and when I tried to do the same for the Board of Selectmen, I realized that you don't have an email up on the website, and Mrs. Bransfield informed me, you don't have email addresses at all. And I think as elected officials that represent the people of Portland, that seems like a logical thing for you guys to have. So I just wanted to suggest that that might be something to think about moving forward into modern times and getting you some Portland CT email addresses. The last thing that these two are arguing over, saying and who was going to come up and say it, so I'll just say it, their birthday is next week, and they have said to me repeatedly that they would really love for their birthday to have Rocky to go home. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Dubey, D-O-N-N-A-D-U-B-A-Y, I'm on 8 Penny Corner Road in Portland. And I apologize, I've never come to any of the town meetings in the past, but this particular subject is what I'm here for. I've lived in Portland since 2009, and I do vote, and this is not how I want to spend my Wednesdays, I'll be here until we do have resolution on this, if I'm not at work, obviously. I missed the last meeting. I did watch it on YouTube, and I just want to remind everybody that we do need to be respectful of these people up here. And I guess I misspoke on the lawsuit that the $125,000 was incorrect, it was actually a lot more, which I didn't realize. I'm asking that Rocky be let, to have a chance and to come home. Again, I think this is probably the only dog bite in Portland that, there was a lawsuit of $275,000. Even the police dogs that had sufficient training bit people did not receive this punishment. So I don't know why this one particular dog is going through all this. So I'm just asking for a resolution that everybody would be happy with, and we're willing to step up and help Paul with whatever needs to be put into place. And happy birthday to you two girls, and this would be a great birthday present for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Are you raising your hand, Owen? Go ahead. To come up to the podium, or? Yes. Excuse me. I wasn't sure if you were raising your hands.
Owen Guilde, Middle Hattam Road, born in the town of Portland, and representing the government of the town of Portland, and you are the constituents and the participants. I've listened to quite a bit of commentary about responsibility, transparency, and accessibility. All but one of these chairs is essentially a volunteer. If you want accountability, vote and elect the person that you think would best represent Almost every person here is new to this activity. I support every one of them. This is a $34 million a year business, and these seven chairs are responsible for guiding all of that. I don't know how any of them keep up with what is necessary to represent you in the way that you deserve, but I can tell you that they're doing their best, and so am I. And so are many others in this room, who are all active in civic organizations, I like to call it a coalition of development groups. And what I heard tonight suggested perhaps there would be one for this specific purpose of animal welfare and animal treatment and all the elements that are connected. Wouldn't it be nice if there was a Portland-based organization that could support Paul and anyone else who needed training, fencing, guidance? Or to provide the general public with some information that would reduce the fear level for people like me who have had a bad experience as a child and are frightened with dogs? If you want to address any of these folks, come to the Selectmen's meetings. You shouldn't be expecting them to be burdened with 10,000 emails from 10,000 residents of this town, that's just not acceptable. With all due respect, my colleagues, thank you.
Thank you. Shirley, are you, Shirley, are you getting up again? I just wanted to be sure there wasn't anyone that didn't have a chance to speak, but I don't think anyone else has raised their hand, so welcome.
Mr. Guilde had made the comment in relation to participating in the community, and somebody else did too, and I don't remember who, and I apologize. I think most people in the room know that Annabelle set up a petition for Rocky and a Facebook page. As of this morning, her petition is going very well, and her signatures are 4.9x the number of voters that voted in the May 14th budget referendum. Thank you.
Thanks, Shirley. So I think we're ready to move on to the next item on the agenda? Don't see any other hands. Under Business, I just wanted to update on the proposed remediation underground pipe 222-230-248, Brownstone Avenue. There was a tour of the, of the property, and I was there, Jim and Ralph had attended.
No, Rick.
No, excuse me, Rick. Rick and Jim, not Ralph, I'm sorry. And the seller, as well as representatives from the town, and we did tour where the pipe starts and followed it as far as we could, it comes out of the ground, turns back onto the ground, and determined that we would ask for a proposal to get ground penetrating radar so it can be determined exactly where that pipe is. And once that, as well as the cost of the environmental assessment of that pipe is achieved, then we will pass that to the seller and have further conversations on that. Anything you want to add, Ralph or Rick?
No.
Okay. There'll be more, I think.
Oh, well, I'll ask a question, I guess.
Sure.
The, is our purchase, our offer letter going to expire? Is that?
I think around the first of July, yes, so I'll have to.
So we may have to take some action on that?
Yes. Thanks for the reminder. Next item is appointments to boards and commissions.
Yeah, I have, I have some appointments for this evening. First, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Christopher Rollo to the Veterans Affairs.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
Got a few more. These are going to be to the Planet Conservation and Development Implementation Committee, which was established. First, I would like to nominate Fred Nouse to a full-time position on that body.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ralph, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
I would like to nominate also to the Planet Conservation Development I would like to nominate also to the Planet Conservation Development Implementation Committee Sharon Peters.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ralph, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries?
Also for a full-time, regular position on the Planet Conservation and Development Implementation Committee, I would like to nominate Claire Frisbee.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries unanimously?
And finally, I would like to nominate to an alternate position on the Planet Conservation and Development Implementation Committee Frank Wineski.
And I'll second that.
Seconded by Ralph, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? Thank you very much. Under New Business, discussion of a possible dog park, and Ralph had put this on the agenda, so I'll turn it over to Ralph.
Okay, so just to give some background for those who haven't been involved with it, like I've been all these years with Park and Rec. In our effort to look at putting together what we wanted to have at the town park that actually started being worked on today, we had put out a survey, the engineers actually did formulate a survey, survey when I think it was, I want to say it was September 2013, about that timeframe. And when we got the results back from the survey, the top two items, I'll just, because it's things I've spoken to, but the top two items were a town pool and the second one was a dog park. When we looked, when the committee looked at the viability of doing those two things on that particular piece of property, it was just decided based on how things would lay out, there were better places in town for those facilities than on that piece of property. So at that point, what happened is that, you know, and I even put in, if you look at the park, there's frequently asked questions, I added an entry for that. At that point, it kind of, you know, we let it, put it to the side. I want to say it was probably about a year or so ago, I think Sean Dwyer, Park Director and I had a conversation about it. And he spent some time, legwork, spent some time just kind of looking at the different sites that he thought would be viable for a dog park. And so we talked about a short list of potential sites. And that's pretty much what we had done at this point. There was no additional work that was done. And to be honest with you, even though there was a high interest listed on the survey, we really haven't had a whole lot of questions about a dog park. Recently, a couple of people have raised the item, you know, with regards to putting a dog park in. So the Park and Rec Commission, both the old one and a new one, we had a number of conversations with regards to it and reached the thought that perhaps the best thing we'd do is really just set up an exploratory committee to take a look at some of the real critical things with regards to a dog park, such as location, such as, you know, how we, you know, handle putting it together, maintaining it, the cost of such a site would be, funding for those things, if there's any money out there that we get grants. And some of the things that we've, you know, heard about with other dog parks and probably taking a look at the rules and regulations that kind of go around dog parks to make sure that we kind of get a jump on having a sense of what having a dog park would bring, you know, bring in that we'd have to be aware of. So what I did was I put together a resolution to try to encompass the things that have been discussed by the commission with regards to things we'd like to see an exploratory committee do. And the only thing I point out, this is, this is, you know, not a new thing. The airline trail kind of went the same way. It was just a group of people that were very excited about the airline trail, got together, ran with it, and obviously that opened up a few weeks ago. I was really thinking about, even with the park, the first committee that was formed on the park, although I've been around forever with the park, I was not even on that committee. So it was a similar thing, where you had a bunch of people separate from the Park and Rec Commission that was running with an idea of something that we can add, a recreation facility that we could add. So this kind of falls into the same vein, trying to put together something where you have a group, you know, of people that are really interested and maybe gauge how much interest it really is. But go out there, take a look at it, come back, do this research, come back and present to the Board of Selectmen what their results were and then, you know, proceed from there. So I don't, I'm bringing it forward, so I guess if there's any questions or comments...
I think Mike wanted to speak.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I've, after the park, the thing that's been the most interest is having a dog park like this. People have been asking about it. I'm a dog lover. We travel to all the ones around town, whether it's in Glastonbury or Rocky Hill or wherever the other ones are. It's a great place to meet other people, new folks in town and stuff. This would be a great addition to what we have. It really would. So, yeah, anything we can do to support it as a board, absolutely.
Would you be interested in being a liaison?
I would love to be a liaison.
Yeah, I would like to also just say that similar experience, as we were talking about the Route 17 park, getting different questions. Aside from questions with the park, having a dog park was one of the bigger questions, one of the larger ones I got. I think getting something like this together with using some of the volunteer energy that we have in town is a great idea. It's a way, so that we'll have something that's built from the grassroots, which I think is some of our bigger successes, so I think this is a great idea.
Well, and like I said, one of the things that was, one's a side note of this is, at the dog parks that we've been to, the socialization that happens with the dogs is kind of a great thing as well. So right now, I know some of the problems we have in town are, if you're going around the reservoir, there's people that walk around without the dogs, have a leash or whatever, that scare to the ones that either aren't familiar with dogs or have had bad experiences. But I think that kind of helps that problem with the dogs too, getting them to socialize and interact with others as well. So that might solve one of the problems that we have.
Anybody else want to speak? Rick?
I like the idea, Ralph, of, you know, setting up the committee and doing a, you know, the grassroots effort. It could be a good thing.
Do you want to move the resolution, Ralph?
Okay.
At this point?
I'll read it.
Okay. Yes.
So it's a resolution creating a dog park exploratory committee. Whereas the Park and Recreation Commission has recently suggested to the Board of Selectmen that a dog park exploratory committee be formed to evaluate the feasibility of building a dog park in the town of Portland and whereas the dog park exploratory committee shall have the following goals. One, dog park requirements and location. Visit other local dog parks to evaluate amenities, prepare and distribute a survey to get feedback on residents' expectations and evaluate results. Review and evaluate the feasibility, anticipated costs and pros and cons of building a dog park at one of the eight locations previously identified by Parks and Recreation and determine if any additional sites should be considered. Two, cost and maintenance. Identify cost estimates for securing a dog park site, designing the facility, preparing the land for construction, and building a facility with the required park equipment amenities. Work with Animal Control, Public Safety, Maintenance, Public Works, and Park and Recreation officials to gather particular additional staffing and operational costs associated with the dog park. Three, funding. Research and identify potential grant or funding opportunities that may be available to help reduce the overall cost of the implementation of the dog park. And four, rules and regulations. Evaluate the potential issues often associated with a dog park and present recommendations for dealing with the issues most often encountered. Prepare a preliminary set of rules and regulations for the facility. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Section 405.5 of the Portland Charter hereby creates a dog park exploratory committee here and after the committee that shall have five members and two alternates. And be it further resolved that the committee shall continue to function until such time as the work called for in this resolution is completed, at which time the committee shall notify the Board of Selectmen and present all results to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen shall disband the committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim. Any further discussion? Okay. There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? So as soon as the next meeting, we can begin to put together the names. Did you say how many members?
Five.
Five and two, okay. That's right. So five and two, so come back with perhaps some suggestions. Anything else on that?
Ralph, just a quick question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Based on the experience that you had with the committees, anyone that's motivated in the community that wants to be part of this could be open to it.
My buddy Dave in the back is...
There you go.
Is already signed up to say he's interested.
Good.
All right, very good. So since we have a lot of dog lovers, so that might be something, if you're motivated and encouraged to get involved, this might be a great way to get involved, so.
I know there's somebody else that's involved. Can I speak to you?
Yes, you may.
Karen Fruchos, there's a whole property down by where the shelter is that you could make adjacent to the shelter where the dogs that are there now...
So I'll actually tell you that, that is one of the sites. Well, I'm going to assume it's where you're talking about, but we've, we're talking, one of the eight sites is a site near Animal Control. And Karen also has talked about having some sort of a role with regards to it as well, so.
I've talked about it, right?
Yeah, so yeah, that is one of the sites.
Okay. Good suggestion. Thank you. Yes, I'll limit it to just your question.
All right. First of all, I'd like to volunteer for that committee if, you know, if you're taking names for it. I do have experience with a dog park in a major city.
Thank you.
In Boston, as a matter of fact.
Okay. So...
Almost three pound down.
And I don't, what's your name again? I forgot.
My name is Paul Gwynn.
Paul Gwynn.
G-L-Y-N-N-I-L-L, I live in 35th Street.
So actually, the only question I would ask you is what, well, we'll, we'll talk about it afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Gwynn. Next item is adopt reserve and liquidity policy. And this is something that is a, in writing, what we already do in terms of reserve funds being established and maintained to ensure continued delivery of town services, to address emergencies, address temporary revenue shortfall, or provide stability during economic cycles. Sufficient reserve funds will be managed to provide adequate cash flow, stabilize the town's interest rates, and provide continuity and service delivery. Number one, reserves shall be defined as the total of assigned and unassigned general fund balance as presented in the most recent audited financial statements of the town. Number two, reserves shall be maintained at a minimum of 8% of the previous year's general fund expenditures as presented in that year's audited financial statements. Number three, the town will maintain a general reserve fund to Letter A. Insulate general fund programs and current service levels from large and unanticipated one-time expenditure requirements. A revenue reduction due to a change in state or federal legislation, adverse litigation or any similar unforeseen action, Letter B. Temporarily insulate general fund programs and service levels from slower revenue growth that typically occurs during an economic recession. Letter C, reserves may be used to provide for temporary financing for unanticipated or unforeseen extraordinary needs of an emergency nature. For example, costs related to a natural disaster or calamity and unexpected liability created by federal or state regulations, excuse me, legislation, immediate public safety or health needs, revenue shortfalls, opportunities to achieve long-term cost savings, or planned capital investments and related debt service. Number four, funds shall be appropriated from reserves only after an analysis and utilization plan has been prepared by the finance director and presented to the first selectmen. The analysis shall provide sufficient evidence to establish that the remaining balance is adequate to offset potential downturns in revenue sources and provide a sufficient cash balance for ongoing financial needs. And lastly, number five, funds should be allocated each year in the budget process to replace any use of reserve funds during the preceding fiscal year to maintain the balance of reserves at the allowed minimum of 8% of prior year general fund expenditures. We've had a policy similar to this for a long time. We have currently approximately 16% of our expenditures in reserve, so this is a minimum of 8% that would mean that would have to be maintained. So entertain a motion for adoption.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph. Discussion?
I think having a formal policy in place that is something that, you know, somewhat mirrors what we're already doing in practice is a good way for us to go. I think it's important as people are evaluating the town that they see that we actually have these kind of formal practices that help our governance, so.
I agree. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is a resolution for transfer of funds for Board of Education capital line item and our liaison, Dave Murphy, is here in case there are any questions. I think this came up at your meeting last night, Dave.
Yes, it is basically under leftover fire project. It's the formality if you want to move that to a different project, it's utilized, you have to go through.
So I think it is bathrooms at the Brownstone Intermediate School. There was remaining $5,669 unspent from that project, so we're being asked for the Board of Education, who will be completing the Brownstone Intermediate School window project, and the bids are pending, that that money be moved into to replace windows and frames from the replace various bathrooms item. So in other words, $5,669 will be added to the window project should this transfer of funds. Is there a motion to approve?
So, go ahead. So moved. I'll second it.
Did you get that? Jim and Mike, discussion or questions?
Can I ask Dave a question?
Sure.
Dave, do you, do you think the windows are going to be replaced this summer or? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did, and I too spoke with the superintendent, because David contacted me and asked about this, and Superintendent O'Reilly remains very positive that this can be completed this next fiscal year, which starts July 1, and knows that these dollars will be put to good use. So there, I believe a purchase order was put together today for the windows, and I know that the company that's doing the demolition, I believe, has started some of the analysis. Yes.
Hey, Dave, how many windows are left? Any idea?
I think you know that, but it's probably, well, phase three of the three-phase project for evidence or...
So it's the rest of them?
It's the backside of the building?
It's what we looked at on that tour, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I know there were four windows that I think Superintendent O'Reilly added to the project.
He did add some. Hopefully the total estimates come in, add our own budget, plus there's a little bit left over for phase two, $32,000, because we all could apply to additional windows that you want to get done.
That's good. Thank you for helping us with that project, Dave. Any other comments?
I was just gonna, oh, no, go ahead.
No, no, I'm fine. I just was asking if we're ready to vote on it.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that I did attend the Board of Education meeting last night and it was, this was discussed because that same concern about whether it be completed. There are plans in place, contingencies. Right now, they're waiting for one final quote and that'll close it up and then they can move forward, but they're committed to getting it done this year.
Oh, good.
So and they're looking at the contingencies, depending on when windows get delivered, et cetera, of how to make sure that happens, so.
That's good. Thank you, Board of Education and Jim as our liaison. Ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Motion carries. The next item is a similar circumstance, and I will read this one, whereas the High Street Water Main, I'm sure I have to write one? Yes. High Street Water Main project activity was recorded in Fund 36 on the financial system. And whereas the project is complete and hasn't had any activity since fiscal year 2012, and whereas there remains $13,813.28 in this fund, and those funds should be transferred to the water operating fund. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen approves the transfer of the $13,813.28 from Fund 36 entitled High Street Water Main Project to the Water Operating Fund, which is number three, and this will therefore close... And this will therefore close the Fund 36. Just as edification, this project was done, I believe, in 2009, 10, I believe, thereabouts. And the project is complete. It was the High Street Water Main replacement project that some residents may recall. Is there a motion to approve this transfer?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Made by Jim, seconded by Ralph. Further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. The next item is project closeout for the water tank project. Similarly, the water tank project activity was recorded in Fund 37 on the financial system. And whereas the project is complete and has not had any activity since fiscal year 2012, and whereas there remains $1,099.99 in this fund, and those should be transferred to the Water Operating Fund. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Selectmen hereby approves the transfer of $1,099.99 from Fund 37 Water Tank Project to the Water Operating Fund III, and this will close Fund 37. What happens with many of these projects, particularly those that are either grant or loan funded, is that once the project is completed, it stays active until such time as we're certain that that project isn't going to require any more funds, because it's now done. So we wait many years until we're sure we don't have to go back and do any extra work. And because we pay for the loan that we got for this water tank project and the previous one for the High Street Water Main, those funds go to the Water Operating Fund, because that's from where we pay those bills. So that's why the money is going to the Water Operating Fund. Is there a motion to approve this transfer?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Status and committee reports.
So do we?
Ralph?
Well, I guess I'd say, because you'll take the water and sewer. So I just want to bring up, obviously, we talked about, but the, they did start the work today on the park. Right now, it's confined to just tree cutting, at least for the next few weeks, I would guess, and then some other work. Hopefully, in a couple of weeks, the rest of the work will start. And, you know, we are sending out letters to the local labors just to give them, you know, a heads up if they didn't recognize what was going on. But just to let them know that, you know, Park and Rec, the committee are around, just in case people have questions with regards to it.
Jim?
Nothing. Water and Sewer Subcommittee had met, you know, earlier, I think it was prior to the last meeting, was trying to set up another meeting for next week, just as part of the ongoing discussion, to evaluate where we're at from a rates perspective, and trying to get the, basically, the income and the expenses in balance. So that works ongoing, and then obviously, once we do that, we want to get on to some other, you know, some other issues, too.
Question for Ralph. Is there gonna be any sort of formal groundbreaking for the park?
Yes, there is.
Yes, there is. It got moved. It was supposed to be today. Obviously, it didn't happen.
Yeah.
We would have been pressed for space, because they were moving around. But the, the actual groundbreaking is gonna, is scheduled for 7/13, July 13th at 5:30.
Okay.
So Board of Selectmen will probably get, you know, some, we'll get a name by them.
Okay, thanks.
Have a comment? We'll start with Kitch.
Kitch Brines, Serenicki, 435 Main Street. I'm here at this point to ask a couple of questions. Through Susan to you, Ralph, about the exploratory committee for the potential dog park. I'm under the impression that generally exploratory committees are for a specific purpose, to explore. And I believe in your final sentence, you said the committee would be seated until completion. Excuse me. Is that the completion of the exploration, or to the completion of the build?
Completion of the tasks that are just exploration.
Completion of exploration, okay.
That would be just like with the park. What they did is they, for each phase, you added a new committee.
Okay, so I want a clarification on that. And could you speak to the eight locations that are, that you mentioned? You mentioned eight locations as a possibility.
I'll be honest with you. I don't know all eight, because some of them, I didn't go out with Sean on those visits. I know some of them that we have discussed. One of them, actually, we originally discussed, the purchase of the property did not occur, so that's no longer on the list.
Okay.
We talked about the Keegan property, where the, where the airline trail is. We're gonna have to see how that works out. It got configured a little differently than what we originally thought, so we'll have to... Certainly, it could still be on the list. It just have to be evaluated for what have to be done to make it viable. The other one I mentioned was the one near the animal control facility right now.
Bernice, were you aware of any other locations? This chairman, no, look.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. I will, I'll circle back and I'll, I'll respond, like, I'll get back to you and I'll respond in some, in the next meeting. I just don't, I don't remember them off the hand, because he went to a couple of them, and they, those are the more, I guess, I looked from the standpoint of the more, I got, I think, he dug up some sites that I'm not quite sure we would, I looked at from the sites that I thought that were more viable. So I got a feeling he may have mentioned a couple that I'm not as familiar with, that were just pieces of, you know, sometimes there are pieces of property that we own, the town of Portland owns, that are scattered around the town. That you don't, you know, you don't realize that it's really town property. So I think he had a couple, I think there might be even one on Bartlett, I think that he had mentioned that we owned some property on Bartlett.
And that's not possible. That's not gonna be possible.
But it wasn't, see that one, he looked at, like, it's not.
Who is he?
Sean.
Oh, okay.
But I thought that wasn't big enough. I didn't think that was a big enough facility.
The reason, the reason is, it was going to be a nature park, I believe, by a land trust, but it's too close to a very old burial site, so it's not appropriate for people to be walking.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can't, I think that was one of the sites, but I'll verify, and that was, that may not even been on the site, but.
Okay, and the second part of the question is this, I'm happy to hear that it's gonna be a groundbreaking, an official groundbreaking, although trees are coming down, on July 13. Are all the pieces that, all the pieces that had been first mentioned as part of the Route 17 park going to be part of the park? Have you had to do any cuts, or is everything intact?
So, at this point, what, we have a couple items that are sitting out there that we're not sure what will happen with them. Because the fact is that we really wanted a level of contingency in case something happened during the build-out. So for now, what we've done is we've kind of put the rec barn to the side and the fitness exercise circuit to the side. Two for two reasons. One is, you know, if they do come off, those are ones that we feel like we could still find a way to make happen if we can't, because we had to use all the contingency. There's other, we think there's other avenues, finding a way to be able to fund those and have them completed. So we're hopeful that the contingency will be more than enough, and they're not huge items, so maybe we come in okay with the contingency. But ultimately, what you saw is you had, from when we started, where we started and where we landed was two and a half years of inflation you're dealing with. So we, we had to take over a million dollars out of the original. So luckily, we worked really hard, and the items that were removed, most of them, you will not, the, 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 the public eye is not gonna have any idea, because they're like a different type of stone and wall, stuff like that. So it's nothing that would reflect. Those are the only two items, I think, that people would question if they're not gonna be there. And again, it's too early for us to say.
Okay, so that I'm, I'm here this evening to advocate for the fitness trail. I'm aware that all of you are aware what I do.
Yes.
And I think that every bit of literature and every bit of testing that's been done on people who exercise proves that it is probably the most important factor for aging well and living a longer life. So I would encourage each of you, as you move forward, to find funds that would support the fitness trail and the stations that had been anticipated to be on it. I know that, I know for a number of people that live in town, that piece, and they were probably people my age, that piece was the most important for them, that if they were there to see grandchildren playing a sport or something, they would indeed have something that was specific for them to do, and they would use their time to both share an experience with their grandchild or their child, but also be able to take care of some of their fitness needs. So I would encourage you strongly to make sure that piece gets in. I think people voted, I think a lot of people who were on the fence about the project said, "There is a piece that's there for me." And I think that's, that's probably a very important piece to have you include.
And believe me, it's important to us as well. Again, the reason why, that was one of those items, is because we believe we could find other streams of funding to make that happen. And it is perhaps the smallest part of the facility. So if we go through that amount of contingency, then we've dealt with some issues. So I, I feel, we feel pretty comfortable on the fitness trail. The rec barn gets a little more of a, we'll have to see if we'll have enough funding for that.
Thank you for your consideration on that.
Danielle.
Danielle Piatti, 35 Strickland Street, for Ralph. Yes, I noticed the trees getting cut down today. I live right there. A few questions. A lot of dust. Are they gonna pay for cleaning homes? I mean, there's a lot of dust that's blowing around. I mean, our house is getting hit, our vehicles, I mean, there's neighbors. I mean, are they gonna, I mean, what's gonna happen there? I mean, do, you know, now we're gonna have to clean our houses, our vehicles, or whatever's out in the yard, because it's dry and it's just blowing, I mean, today was awful.
Yeah, and, and we actually had a conversation, I don't remember, a few days ago, I don't remember, one time I was with the, the developer, and we had a conversation about that. And that's, something like that is not necessarily something they wouldn't do. They may do, you know, it's something, I certainly, we talked about it, so I'll make sure that the next time I see him, I'll mention it.
Our, our house, we're right there in the wide open. You know, the other neighbors are, have trees, well, right now. But we're in the wide open, so we get everything.
Yeah, no, believe me, I'll, I'll note it to him. And we did have, like I said, a conversation. And what I will also say is I believe the tree cutting may be done. Like, I think the only thing they have to do tomorrow is to, is to complete getting rid of the trees off, to grind them down. So I, I think what you see right now in terms of trees is the extent of the trees.
Well, I know that equipment is still there, so who knows? They may be cutting more.
No, I think, I thought, when I left them, because I stopped in there today, and when I left them, I thought he said that they believed they would be done cutting, cutting on today. And the only thing they have left tomorrow was to remove the.
So whatever they cut, that's it? They're not cutting anymore, or you don't know?
That's it. I, that was, unless something were come up in, during the design that they find have an issue, I, I think that is the extent of the cutting.
Another thing I noticed, they surveyed, or somebody did in our, well, now it's the town's yard, but we have more stakes in our yard. I mean, what's going on there? Are they gonna start digging up?
No, I think they just, you know, we certainly did surveying from the town standpoint.
Yeah, so, and we had one stake, but now we have, like, multiple stakes in our yard. I almost ran one over, because I'm used to backing on that field.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's just they were using them to try to understand location, because then what they did is, if you see the trees, because I know we had a call about trees being tagged, and it didn't mean the trees were coming down, it just indicated to them the line that they were working from.
Well, they cut a little path, I noticed, off of our driveway. They cut a path where the wetland is, like, around. I noticed it today, too, so.
So is your property the one that has the garden that's right on the edge with the?
That's right. We waited and waited. Nobody came to us, so we planted our garden.
Yeah, well, there is, um...
See, that's the thing, you know, I don't mean to be here for this.
We have a crossover there, so.
Well, I don't mean to be mean about it, but nobody came to us, and you're saying something got mailed out. We never got received.
No, it hasn't gone, it's gonna go out on the next day.
Well, another thing is, I'm not trying to be here to be mean about it, but it would have been nice if it came to, especially our house, because we bordered. We are bordering this, and we waited to plant the garden, and my father's like, "I'm gonna plant it," because nobody, everybody says, "Yeah, we're gonna come and see your father, we're gonna come and see your father, we're gonna trade some land, or do swap, or do this." Nobody ever came, so, I mean, I'm not here to, you know, argue about it, but now we got 500 plants.
Yeah, I don't think your, your garden's gonna be disturbed. I mean, they realize that, we know there's a crossover, land over in that corner.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not here to, to, you know, complain about it, it's just.
No, you're asking for information, and I'll, I'll go back and make sure I know the two things you talked about, and make sure that they get to develop.
Yeah, I mean, and the thing is, I mean, it'd be nice, maybe somebody from the project will come talk to my father. I can give you his phone number.
I don't know if he wants to.
No, I'm not gonna give it on this.
Yeah, no, I.
I can give you his phone number, I can give you my phone number, but you're probably better off talking to my father, because you could talk more about what's going on, because we don't, really, we're just at a standstill.
No, I understand. I, like I said, I don't think they're gonna be touching where you, where you staked out your garden there.
And one last thing, a fence. Is there gonna be a fence going up eventually after all this is done and said with, so we're not right viewing everybody? Because I mean, we like privacy if we could.
Well, I know that a good portion of that whole corner is really, you know, the thing you should understand, when you look at the property, if you look at that back right corner, when it's all complete, it's gonna be at least 14 feet lower, maybe more. So everyone looks at that property, and you look and you go, "Well, it kind of looks like it's level." But it's not even close to level when you look at it from that standpoint. So that back corner is going to be at least four, it might even be more than 14. I thought 14 was a number stuck in my head. But what's gonna happen is there's gonna be a wall coming around, and a good portion, all those houses on your side are actually gonna have, so we always talked about you're gonna have trees, because you gotta block. Well, some of those back houses, they're gonna have to look down to see the games. So they're not gonna have, it sounds like they're gonna be in their backyard looking at people, looking, they're gonna have to look down. Yours on the edge, I don't know how deep that spot goes down. I know we also talked about plantings along that edge as well, even with the wall, so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because we could see straight out. I mean, from our bedroom windows, you could see straight out in the field. I mean, I mean, I don't wanna be looking at, I mean, games all the time, or.
Yeah, I, I just don't have the ma, the drawings with me right now, but I'll.
Yeah, but like I said, I'll give.
I'll make sure someone circles back with you.
Well, what I'll do is I'll give you my father's number, because it would be nice, like I said, if somebody just comes and approaches us, because, like I said, we waited and.
Yeah, I understand.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Danielle.
Annabelle, Rock 97 Mill 6 Avenue Extension, this is for Ralph. I just have a few questions. I'd just like you to know that I'm a big supporter of the dog park, and that the only time my dog ever gets to go to a dog park is in East Granby when I have soccer. And that my only question for you is, can, like, 10-year-olds volunteer for the committee?
That's.
I will comment. You can attend all meetings. In order to be by charter a member of any board or commission in the town, you have to be a registered voter in the town court. But certainly, you're most welcome to attend.
Yeah, Annabelle, I'll, I'll pass that on, that you're interested in participating some shape or form.
Absolutely. The more help we can get, the better the project will be. Do I see someone in the back? I can't quite see. No, okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Informal discussion? Anything open in formal? Yes, Shirley, I didn't see your hand.
Well, I didn't know what you were talking about. Way past my bed. I want to make a comment about the dog park.
Yes.
Given the situation with not knowing what's gonna happen with Rocky and what the policies are gonna be in town, I think jumping into a dog park might be counterproductive at this time.
Well, I mean, we're not jump, I mean, I don't think, there's nothing wrong with doing some investigation on what it entails. I mean, at this point, we certainly have a lot of projects going on in the town, so. I mean, at this point, we certainly have a lot of projects going on in the town, so, you know, I don't, it's not like we're gonna turn around and the next day we're digging, I don't think so. I think it's gonna take some time, we're gonna, we have some big projects to get through, because in all likelihood, some of those individuals are gonna be ones that'll be participating in as well, so I would like to think that we will be past these type of items, and we'll worry about that when we can evaluate the results.
Okay. And is Middlesex Avenue on your list?
Middlesex Avenue's never left the list, it's still...
No, she me, I think... For the park, for the dog park.
Oh, no, I, I don't, that, I don't think that was on the...
Please make sure that you record that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I said nothing, Shirley.
We'll move on to informal discussion by the selectmen. Is there anything you wish to speak on?
I have just one thing.
Yes, Jim?
Just tomorrow night is the high school graduation for the class of 2018, so just congratulations to them, good fortune, as they, as they start their, their next chapter.
Congratulations to all the staff, superintendent, and certainly our students. I have nothing on the follow-up items tonight, so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session, and we will be inviting the Economic Development Commission to attend with us, and it is on the lease of town-owned real estate, and I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
So thank you all, have a good evening.